I just popped in, that.
Paula Rechtstraw.
Kimberly McMichael.
Philip Butler.
There's no work session in July. A special called Board Meeting will take place on Monday, July 22, 24 at 9:00 a.m. The meeting will be conducted via Zoom and members of the public can view it in via live stream. The purpose of this meeting is to approve the personnel report. The next Board Meeting is scheduled for Monday, August 12, 2024. The meeting begins at 6:00 p.m. at Central Administrative Offices located 511 Harrington Highway, Eden, North Carolina. Access the latest agendas from the Rockingham County Board of Education by visiting www.rock.k12.nc.us Board of Education and click it on Board Meeting Agendas. Tonight, we have Pastor Keith Kevin Duncan from Sharon Baptist Church for our devotion.
Had I known it was a devotion. Let us pray. Father God, I just thank you for your love for us. I thank you for this opportunity where we can gather together and do the work for this state, for this county, as we process our education for our children, for our community, Lord, as we build the future and the decisions that are made here today. And so, Father, I pray that you would be with each and every person who is here, who is contributing, those elected, those who serve, and, Father, those who contribute through the community. And, Father, I pray that the proceedings would go orderly and would be honoring to one another and to you. We ask that you would be lifted up. We pray these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you so much. We will now have a moment of silence. We lost a teacher this past weekend, Shontae Strickland, teacher at Morehead High School, and we would like to have a moment of silence. So, we all bow our heads. If we can remember that family in our thoughts and prayers this week. Her service will be at Morehead. Do you know the time yet, Dr. Stover?
I don't know the exact time.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
12 o'clock, so it is 12 to 3.
12 to 3 at Morehead Auditorium. Thank you so much. Ms. McMichael, will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance tonight?
Yes, ma'am. Everybody stand and face the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Dr. Stover and Dr. Perkins will recognize our valedictorians and salutatorians.
So, it's an honor to recognize these young men and women who have worked so hard, not only during their senior year, but throughout their high school, and I would say throughout their K-12, or in some cases, pre-K-12, whole career. They honor us, they're going to go on to do great things, and we're really excited to provide this moment for them. It's a lot of hard work, I'm sure they would attest to that. What we're going to do is we'll recognize the salutatorians first. We'll have a picture, you'll get a picture with me real fast, and then we'll have all the salutatorians take a picture together, and then we'll do the same thing for the valedictorians.
All right, so first, we are recognizing our salutatorians, and these are the individuals that had the second highest weighted GPA in their school, and we'll recognize these individuals alphabetically, starting first at Readsville High School. Emily Benwellis. I'm not sure she was able to be here tonight. There she is, I know she's in the back. All right. Emily, what are your plans after?
I'm going to be studying PR and advertising at the University of North Carolina in Chapel Hill.
PR and advertising?
Yes.
All right, congratulations. Do you have family members here?
Yeah. Did I get a chance to take a picture?
Yeah, if you want to come out and take a picture, you can.
We've got a large crowd tonight, don't we? Maybe I guess you have to do the same thing, right?
From Rockingham County High School, Olivia Bradley.
Good to see you. What will you be doing?
I'm studying engineering at NC State.
All right. Congratulations. Your family's here?
Yes.
All right, congratulations.
We get on pictures?
Thanks.
From McMichael High School, Dylan Paul Lambert.
And what are your plans for next year?
Engineering.
Or this year, I guess, right?
Georgia Tech, engineering.
All right.
And your family's here? Let's recognize your family. Congratulations. From Rockingham Early College High School, Akasha Matkins.
No, she's not here.
And from Morehead High School, Ethan Michael Strian.
And your plans?
I plan to study STEM at UNC Chapel Hill.
All right, I'll see you. All right, and then let's all get together.
And your family's here as well, so congratulations.
Here, I'm going to let you guys move, and I'll be on the side here. Hold on for just a quick second. Let's give them all another round of applause.
And our valedictorians, again, recognized alphabetically, first from Rockingham County High School, William Grayson Addaway.
And so, your plans?
I'm going to be attending Chapel Hill and Morehead games for our show.
Wow.
And Will's family's here, so congratulations. From Readsville High School, Evelyn Benwellis. And her sister can come down and take your picture now.
Congratulations. And your plans, I know they involve Chapel Hill too.
UNC Chapel Hill, PR and advertising as well.
It's like we're having days.
The competition continues, right?
That's right.
Congratulations to your family. From the Rockingham Early College High School, Thomas Blackstock.
Congratulations, Thomas. Here you go. And your plans?
Political science and music education at UNC Chapel Hill.
All right.
Your family's here. Congratulations to your family as well.
And, you know, we'll be expecting to hear back from you in four years or three years if you graduate early for the music education part.
From McMichael High School, Delaney Reese Mitchell, and I think Delaney's parents are here, and she's on FaceTime right now, right?
Congratulations, Delaney. I don't, yeah. Hey, how are you doing?
She's on a bus with Teens Westward Bound right now.
Oh, okay. Whereabouts, what are your plans, Delaney?
I'm going to Duke University to study biology.
Okay. Congratulations. Yeah, yeah. All right, I'll tell you what, Delaney, I'll hold your picture for, the group picture. So, I'm going to put you down for a second, Delaney. We've got one more, and then we're going to pick you right back up.
And last but not least, from Morehead High School, Julia Page Tuggle.
Congratulations.
And your plans?
I'm going to UNC Chapel Hill and majoring in media and journalism.
And Paige's family's here as well, so congratulations to you all.
And so, we have a lot of Rockingham County students who are going to be in the journalism program, one way or the other. I think this is a first. And I'm going to hand you back your phone. Thank you. Let's give them again a round of applause. Thomas, well, I'm sure you want to, I'm going to say this, this is a great opportunity. When I was a poli sci major at Chapel Hill, I had to view a local meeting as part of my requirements. You can do that now and stay, or just, as I would tell everybody, please feel free to go unless you want to see local politics and government in action, please stay. But otherwise, don't hesitate to go. We were just so proud of all of y'all.
And Dr. Stover, we did have one tie at the Early College for salutatorian, and that's Emma Elizabeth Rechtstraw. She's coming to the July 22 Board Meeting, and we'll recognize her there, so.
Thank you.
Mr. McPherson, would you read our statement for public comments?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
All right, in accordance with School Board Policy 2310, we will now turn to the public comment section of our meeting. On behalf of the Board of Education, I would like to express our gratitude for your contributions to our discussion on issues facing our board and our school. Public comments do not necessarily reflect the views of the board. Board members will not respond directly to individuals who address the board during this portion of the meeting, except to request clarification of points made by the presenter. Out of respect for the privacy of students and staff, discussion of matters involving individual students and core personnel will not be permitted. All speakers will be allowed three minutes for their comments, and we ask that you please conclude your comments when you hear the second beep. Thank you to each of you who signed up for public comment today.
Thank you so much. Our first person to speak tonight is Donna Strater.
Okay, I'm sorry, I couldn't hear what he said. Can I speak regarding the possible movement of my principal? It's okay? First of all, I want to tell you that we got word of this this afternoon, that Dr. Harden may be moved, and as of 3:00, we were texting furiously, and I want to show you the family that I'm going to reference in my comments. If you're from Wentworth, you'd raise your hand, please. My parents are in their 90s, and their health is not good. I have family members who are local and provide some help, but witnessing the steady decline of loved ones is not easy. You feel helpless, and the uncertainty of the situation only adds to your stress. A long way from her Mississippi home and the rest of her family, Dr. Harden lost her mother to cancer several years ago and is now facing the loss of her dad. We've worked with Dr. Harden several years now, and we can tell you that no matter the challenge, she is all in. I have never had a harder working principal in my 28 years with this system. She conducted my end-of-year evaluation via Zoom from her dad's hospital room almost 700 miles away. But in the coming months, she's going to need to lean into the support that she is so used to providing. I would suggest that that's going to be difficult for her. We are requesting three things. You show Dr. Harden a strong leader in this school system for years, you recognize she has more than earned the grace that she needs at this time, that you allow us to be there for her and provide work stability when her life outside school again will change forever, and lastly, ensure that the person or persons who assured her a month ago that she could remain in her current position for the 2024-25 school year keeps that promise. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Sarah Adair.
Hi, my name is Sarah, and this upcoming year will be my second year at Wentworth with Dr. Harden as an EC Teacher Assistant. Dr. Harden immediately welcomed me with open arms for my first year at Wentworth, and I loved it. It was nice having a principal who knew my name and my job at the school, because I did not have that in Wake County. She saw my worth, and she often let me know how much she enjoyed working with me and how much my coworkers enjoyed working with me. This, it was actually two weeks ago, I just started back to school at East Carolina University so I could get my bachelor's degree and become a special education teacher, all thanks to Dr. Harden's encouragement, so she's been great to me. Earlier this year, my mother had, my mother had open-heart surgery, and Dr. Harden was very gracious and let me be by her side when she needed me most. This next year will be very tough for Dr. Harden due to her father's situation. Of course, our personal families matter, but our school family matters too. One of Dr. Harden's favorite quotes is, "Family comes first." Please consider allowing her to stay with Wentworth during this challenging time. She has always been there for us, and now it is our time to be there for her. We have a great staff team here at Wentworth who works so well together, all thanks to Dr. Harden's strong guidance. Let us have her back this upcoming year like she's always had ours.
Thank you. That's all the public comments we have tonight. Do we have anyone who wants to do board comments? Ms. McMichael?
So, thank you for everybody who was here in attendance for the meeting, and thank you for being here to help celebrate our valedictorians and salutatorians and their accomplishments. I wish you all the very best as you begin your next chapters in life. As many of you have been following our conversation around our Facility Committee and the work that comes from that committee. This committee is an ad hoc committee of the county, not the school district, formed on August 30, 2021, after the school district staff presented over a $45 million need request to the commissioners. The commissioners were shocked. As a result of this committee's start, our Board of Education decided to work within committees such as our Safety Committee, I didn't list them, but our Safety Committee, our Finance Committee, we have a Policy Committee to create a space for some informal discussion, and it's a way to have conversation in a more relaxed setting. Questions can be asked without criticism coming for the length of time or how many questions that we've asked. It enables us to get the work done. None of these committees vote or make decisions on behalf of the entire Board of Education. None of our committees have external representatives from the community, because at-large board members who were elected to represent the whole county serve on each one. None of our other committees are being asked to have formal agendas and minutes kept. However, we all keep, we all keep some minutes, and we report back to our Board of Education during work sessions, and we are provided paper copies so that questions can be asked and people can follow along. I've never been asked, not even one question, during a board meeting after giving a report. However, we still find ourselves with people who do not understand. It has become clear to me through our board meeting discussions and formal discussions and the wording of our Action Item 7.3, that our Facility Committee has come to a point of blame, and there's an expectation for Ms. Rechtstraw and myself to serve a position that we're not elected to serve. While I'm very proud of the work that we've accomplished earmarking over $46 million through pay-go and restricted funds to various capital needs for all four zones over the next five years, we have worked, we've also worked to create a framework for the future so that additional projects can be added. I would like to move this past all of our adult feelings and just get some work done for students. I'm not interested in speaking on behalf of the commissioners, I'm not interested in defending the commissioners, I'm not interested in speaking on behalf of any of our other board members or staff. It's my opinion that if we need formality that's being requested in Action Item 7.3, then all of our board members should be included in those discussions, and I understand that this does slow the process, but trust is very important to me as your at-large board member. And as tonight, I'm just suggesting that the goals of our committee have been filled. We've done all the work that we need to do for the next five years, not, we've not done all the work that we need to do, but we have certainly created a timeline and a framework to fulfill work that needs to be done, and I would suggest that our committee just currently ceased to exist as it's serving.
Thank you. Mr. Butler, do you have anything? Ms. Rechtstraw?
First of all, I want to thank Ms. McMichael for what she just said. I completely agree with everything you said. We don't need additional bureaucracy on top of already too much bureaucracy. But, and so, my comments tonight are that, from one, I hope everybody had a happy fourth and enjoying their summer. And now that we have gotten through our local budgeting, I'd really like to see our board, our school board, and our county commissioners board to have a joint meeting with one of the discussion items to include a legislative agenda that we can support together. When I spoke to the commissioners on June 3, I requested that they come alongside the Board of Education to help us advocate at the state level for additional funds that will adequately support mandates, support additional staff that have direct contact with our students, and to support an appropriate compensation for the professionals who impact our future leaders. So, I would like to, I would like to request that we look and have conversation with the county commissioners, maybe with their chair, and see if we can set a meeting up. The third thing I'd like to say is I'd like to, I'd like to thank the board for the moment of silence for Ms. Strickland. I really did not know her personally, but I did have the honor of hearing her sing at Morehead's graduation this past June, and the privilege of seeing her reaction as students were crossing the stage. It was obvious that they had made a lasting, that she had made a lasting impression and a lasting relationship as she cheered on each student, and they reciprocated that appreciation of her. She will be missed.
Anyone else have anything? I'd like to also congratulate the valedictorians and salutatorians tonight. We're very proud of you, and we look forward to hearing from you in the future to see where you land, because that's going to be an exciting time. I think I've updated the board on the telemedicine clinic that's going at Moss Street next year. We're very excited about this, and the CMA has been hired. She is from Rockingham County, and nurses have visited a school in Greensboro to observe, and we are very excited for this to begin at Moss Street. It will begin in the fall, and we'll probably have a ribbon cutting for that, so there'll be an exciting time. So, I wanted to give an update to the public. Okay, could we have a motion to approve our consent agenda?
Not, not yet.
Oh, okay.
Dr. Corcoran, if you'll come up, I've got a question. About one of the policies. It is Policy 7340-R, Employee Dress and Appearance.
Yes, sir.
Has that been approved?
It has not as of yet.
That's right. And let me tell you, I taught school for 30 years, at least 15 of them, I wore jeans. This thing says, if I can find my eyes. It says, inappropriate slacks or pants, including jeans, sweatpants, exercise, Bermuda shorts, shorts, bibbed overalls, see-through leggings, blah, 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 jeans, people, jeans, sweatpants, et cetera, may be worn contingent to work assignments. This thing says, business casual. I am telling you, I go into business offices and see jeans every day. This is business casual. I worked in the mills in Rockingham County, believe it or not, back before the days of polyester. We had Washington Mills in Mayodan, we had Philcrest in Eden, we had Dan River in Danville, right? People in those days either worked in textiles or furniture. They either had sawdust in their head, or what else did they have? We called them, "Prestoals." Have you heard the term "lent head"? We have done away with legitimate businesses in this country because of stupid proposals like this. Wrangler is no longer in North Carolina. I don't guess that, no longer in the country, but I will tell you, when we start legislating what teachers can and can't wear, we've gone too far.
We can take this back to the Policy Committee and discuss it.
Thank you.
Okay, do we have a?
So, do we need to remove?
I guess we need to remove.
Remove that policy bump?
I would remove it.
I'll make, I'll second it.
To remove? Okay, so how do we?
What number is it? What number was it bump?
730, 7340-R.
That's the regulation, and 7340 is the policy.
Correct.
And it is on our agenda tonight, Madam Chair, as a second reading. So, Brandon, now that the motion has already, I'm sorry.
How do we proceed with this?
So, if you're removing the regulation and not the policy?
Let's remove, remove it all until we can further study it. What do you think?
So, then, then you would revise the consent agenda, the motion would be to revise the consent agenda to remove Policy 7340 and 7340R?
Right.
From consideration as part of the consent agenda. That's the motion.
That's the motion?
Madam Chair, can I ask for?
Yes, yes.
Brandon, Mr. McPherson, would you say that one more time? The motion is to revise the consent agenda to amend, say that one more time.
To remove, to remove Policies 7340 and 7340R?
Okay, that's it?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
So, we have a motion and a second?
I'll make the second.
You make the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
So, now, now you have to approve the consent agenda.
Now, we need a motion to approve the consent agenda as it is revised.
So, moved.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Did you second it?
I'll second it.
Uh-huh. I'll second it.
Oh, okay.
Thank you so much. Okay, Mrs. John?
Good evening, Madam Chair, board members, Dr. Stover. Tonight, I am here asking approval to request additional funding in the amount of $185,000 from the county commissioners for the renovation of Dalton McMichael's track. From my understanding, the track has not been able to be utilized for a track meet for about 15 years, and during graduation, I actually walked the track with some heels on, and normally you can't walk a track with heels on, but due to the condition of it, I walked it, and the first step onto the track, I came up with rubber on my shoe. And what we have since found out from the surveyors is that the track is not symmetrical, neither is it a regular, a regulation track, so it needs to be widened as well. And we have negotiated funds with the company, and I just also would like for you and the public to know that we do have a lighting project that's at Dalton McMichael High School. The original request was for $300,000, and it is coming in at half of that amount, so at least $150,000 of the requested funds will remain at Dalton McMichael High School. In addition to that savings, we do have the prioritization list that Ms. McMichael mentioned earlier. That's about $46, pardon me, $46 million in upgrades. That's about 46, pardon me, $46 million in upgrades to our schools, and with our vestibule projects alone, we are saving $1.5 million. And also, one of the projects that was approved on the consent agenda is a two-story roof at Holmes Middle School. Pardon me, I'm sorry. The original quote for that from our architects, and this was, of course, closer to coming out of the pandemic, when supplies, the supply chain was horrible, and that roof was estimated to cost $1,024,000. And you've approved it on the consent agenda, and on that particular project alone, we're saving over a half million dollars. So I am asking for your approval.
Tell me one more time before we? McMichael Track?
Yes.
It's going to cost, we had budgeted X number of dollars.
We had budgeted $500,000.
And it can't, and it will cost another 100 and?
85,000.
Eighty-five. And that will include redoing the track to meet?
It will include redoing it, bringing it up to regulation, and it will have that polyurethane coating on it as well.
At such point in time as it's appropriate, I will make that motion.
Can I have a second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Ms. John.
Thank you. So the next item. And I can't see here, I'm sorry. The next item that I am asking or requesting approval for is the ability to apply for the Public School Repair and Renovation Fund for Western Rock Middle School, building number four. When we had our board meeting at Western Rock Middle School, you all were able to tour building number four with Principal Ray and myself, and it is obvious that that building, in order to house students, is in need of additional renovations. And when I say additional renovations, the building underwent major renovations with S.R. funding to include HVAC, lighting, water fountains. So there's new, all of this stuff is new in the building and operating properly. However, the walls are crumbling. There is no bathroom for young men and women to go to, so the separate gang bathrooms, we're in need of those. We're in need of flooring in that building. And the building is situated in, right now, we have sixth grade students who are located on the hill, and they have to travel a considerable ways to the cafeteria. And when we're looking at building safety, this building, the way that the campus is laid out, it's a natural security perimeter. And so I'm asking permission to be able to apply for this fund, and I want to make it very clear to the public and to you that there is a difference between the repair and renovation grant and the public school, the capital funding grant. With that capital grant, that's the one that we've talked about, that we could build a new school with. There's also a 5% match with the capital funding. This particular grant has no match. There are funds that have been given to all of the counties, and we would be able to pay for the architect to do the drawings, to give us a good estimate as to what it would cost to bring that building up to, I would say, up to code to house students in it.
It's important to notice, to note that that building was a vocation building. It was built and used for auto mechanics and ag. It only had a boys' bathroom because when that building was built, only boys took those classes, so.
Has the roof on that building? Is it part of the?
The roof is, the roof is okay. And of course, when we get the architect in there, we'll look at everything.
Right, it's a good thing.
To give us a good, solid estimate.
Wow. Ms. John? Yes, ma'am, do you mind? Ms. John, do you mind me asking if the, you said the, the roof's in, it's in really good condition, or you think it's going to need to be replaced in the next five years?
Now, it may need to be replaced. We can actually have our architects look at that. I would want to make sure before we put more into it. Of course, the HVAC and all of that is already there, and anything that's under that roof right now, even though we're asking for additional renovations, we wouldn't want anything to happen to that current HVAC replacement, the lighting, all LED lights. It's really, I mean, if you can look at the building for what it could be, it's really a great building, but we would want to make sure that that roof is up to par.
I was just going to ask if that could be included in the grant, if it's needed.
Yes, in this particular grant, we can do repairs and renovations to existing buildings, unlike the capital fund, where we can build a totally new building. This one we can't.
Or additions.
Will that take care of the sixth grade students?
Yes, sir.
It will? Okay. Do we need a motion on that?
Yes. Yes.
I'll make it.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Redistricting capacity study.
Good morning, good evening, board members. Before I go, start with my comments, I appreciate everyone who spoke about Ms. Strickland. I was also at Morehead's graduation, had the privilege of sitting next to her, and, you know, I think the measure of a person is what others say about them. And it was so clear, sitting next to her, that the kids had so much respect for her. She has given so much Morehead, and I think it's fitting that services will be held on Friday for her there. It's, it's a loss for us. Hits you hard when you just think that, she, she talked to me about she had one more year, and then she was looking forward to retiring, and, and so it's hard. It's a big loss for our, our community, and we just want to keep her, certainly keeping her in our, in my prayers.
She had a son that went to McMichael until his senior year, and she did a lot of volunteering at McMichael.
Yeah.
We thought a lot of her.
She was just a, a great asset to our county, for sure. So the purpose, what we were hoping today is that I would have some proposals to go over for you with redistricting. Unfortunately, we only, I, I've got two now. I got the other one at like four o'clock, so I haven't even had a chance myself to really review it. The one proposal we had is from OREAD, and they can start in November, would be the earliest they could start. What, I anticipate having everything to the board to go over for the August 12th meeting, that we can go over all the proposals, and I will have a recommendation. At this point, I don't have a recommendation, because I haven't seen all the proposals, and I haven't had time to study them or a timeline. But I know one of the things that was important to the board was expediency. And so the earliest we can start, and they have a timeline set up for us for the OREAD proposal, I has, as I said, as I said, I have not gotten a chance to dig into the second proposal, and we're anticipating at least one more. And they're waiting on some data from us. So that's where we are with that. But I do believe that we will be able to have a motion, a proposal, and an action item for you where we can move forward, and right now, the worst-case scenario would be November. Just start.
Oh, now we've had proposals before, and we've used OREAD, and we've used, but we never do anything with the data. We don't go anywhere with it. The economic development, the person that does economic development for the county, didn't she say she could lay out the maps and lay out the growth, and so we could see what's happening in Rockingham County?
Yes, she, she has that ability, and that's what they'll do too. So what this proposal does is they will actually talk to each of the economic development folks in the city and at the county, the demographics, and say, hey, what do you have in the pipeline? And they'll make their, their recommendations based on that. What they don't do is they, they get the information for capacity, for how many students a school can hold, that comes from us. So they don't do capacity studies. All they can really do is say, hey, based on the trend lines, this is where we recommend some districts, and this is where you can expect growth.
And?
Or loss.
And Ms. Houston, I asked, I asked economic development that very same question, why can't y'all just do this? And, and one of the things that Ms. Corcoran said to me was that, that a group like OREAD or one of the other groups that's proposing can look at trends, historical trends, and do projections of possible trends, I guess is the way to say that, and that, that they could not do. And, but she, they can do the overlay of what the current, yeah, of the current information that we have, but, but as far as trends with capacities go, that's what, because I felt the same way, I was asking the same kind of questions. So I do have a, one other question, though, Dr. Stover. So if, if they're waiting on data from us, this other group, and, and time is of the essence, y'all, I mean, I hate to say it, but I almost feel like we need to, we need to get this information together and either have a, and have a special call meeting or, or something before August the 12th, is that what it was? I mean, we have talked about, I'm sorry? Okay, we have talked about how, how urgent this is, and it is, and I just, sorry, I just feel like we need to move on this. And when do we expect to get that other proposal? I mean, you said you didn't, did we not give everybody a ti, a deadline?
We did. This was a, a factor of the transition between Power School and Infinite Campus, what they were asking for, to submit a proposal. We can just go with two proposals. What we tried to do is folks that had, and it's the same two people that we brought to you last time. Again, I haven't had a chance to look, dig into Mr. Cropper's, and I did tell you, it might be a little bit with the, with the timing that we were asking, it might be a little bit tough to get proposals in on time. So we had the same two we had last year, and we can compare them, and it's always up to the board if we want to call a special meeting for that.
And I guess my other reason for feeling that, the urgency is the fact that, you know, we're, we're talking about having these community meetings too, sorry. And, and we've got to plan those, and, and, I mean, I, look, y'all rang me in, go ahead, because I know I get, I'm ready to hit the road running, so y'all rang me in.
So, well, one thing I can say to you is, again, once I see the proposal, when they can start, I, I spoke to each of the folks individually that we asked to submit proposals, and told them, stressed to them, the expediency was what we were looking for?
Yes.
And why? And that the board would be fine with even just a rough estimate, right? So that we could hopefully, and I told them the reason why too, was so that we can consider our future kind of building needs in the Reevesville Elementary options. So the thing is, is that if the other proposals can't go earlier, there's no need to rush, and, and because they couldn't start till, OREAD can't start till November, right? And again, I haven't had a chance to dig into Mr. Cropper. But like, so if, if he can do it earlier, then I think a special call meeting would be appropriate. If he can't start until September or anything like that, then I don't know that we have to, because we can't get it started until then. Does that make sense?
Madam Chair?
Okay.
Can we not add this to the July 22nd?
That's what I was just thinking.
Oh.
Since we're all coming in on July 22nd.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Wyatt?
I'm glad to hear Paula say what she just said, because it goes right along with what, what I have thought. And I'm going to go ahead and do it based on what I've heard. I'd like to make a motion that, so the board, so people know what the board thinks.
Right.
I'd like to make a motion to move forward with OREAD or another agency to get data for, for our schools, and apply for a grant to build a new South End on South Park. I'll make that as a motion.
Is there a discussion?
So, one of the things I thought is that we were going to use this information to, to then give the board all the information they needed to decide if, and to also ensure that we're making the best use of the money to make sure that South Park, that area, would support the school, the renovations, those types of things, to give all the, all the information. I think what I would like, and, and I, I hope I'm not being inappropriate and talking over your motion, I would like for us to see where these proposals come in, give them to you, and then, like, let, let the board decide where they want to go, when, once we have all the information. I don't think we have all the information to know, to have, because it could be, for instance, that the, the demographers, demographers suggest that we need a bigger school, you know, in Reevesville, because of the, of the upcoming folks. And so I want to make sure that we have all that information so that we present the most successful application as well.
I understand that, also understand that South End has been there for a long time.
Right.
The population is there, the students are there, the need is there, there are students. All you've got to do is walk through that school and see that, that it's not up to par. The buildings that we build today can be added on to, they do wings by grade level. I hate that we continue to keep kicking this can down the road when that school is, is in need of repair, and we need to, to get these studies done. I, I think that the commissioners and everybody in the community needs to know that, what the board wants.
We need to, yes, and if we wait till all this information comes in, we're going to miss the grant opportunity?
Right.
For the 40 million that we can apply for.
I, I can tell you, and again, we could still, I feel very comfortable that we could still submit a very successful grant, and rigorous grant, even if we wait till August to vote on this. It's what I, what I'm saying. I mean, like, I, I, you can certainly, I'm, we're going to do what you want, and this is your meeting, not Sean Stover's meeting. But I do want to just make sure that, to have all the information. I feel comfortable with our anticipated deadline for the grant, that even if we waited till the 12th, we would be able to submit a successful grant, if that's what the board chose to do.
Can I make a comment, Madam Chair? So I think while we all agree that South End needs to be replaced?
Yeah.
We've also understood, based off of what our staff has presented to us, as well as county staff, that our chances of getting the grant is going to be much greater if we are applying to also include renovations to other schools in addition to building. If we don't get the grant, then our money doesn't even free up until 2027 for a build.
A self-financed, a county financed?
Yes, sir, a self-financed construction.
That's right.
So, so if we submit a weak grant and we don't get it, I think that, that's dulling our chances every time we submit. Does that make sense? I feel like we've been, I feel like I was?
It does, it, up to the point that, that you would have to, using this motion, have to submit a weak grant. I think it'd be the same grant.
Well, I, I agree with Mrs. McMichael. If we submit two grants, one to build South End, and one to do the renovations at Williamsburg and Monroton, they are two strong grants. They speak to our needs. So I, I hear what Ms. McMichael is saying, and we would come closer to getting that. So that means if we go by Bob's motion, which I lean to, then we would have to write two grants. Well, y'all would, so.
It would be one grant, include both items, right?
Exactly, exactly. And you said that we had information that we had gained from? Exactly, exactly. And you said that we had information that we had gained from OREAD last year. Am I correct?
The 2022, August 2022.
Okay. Well, then why can't we look at that information and see what it says? I mean, we went by the, what was that, plan that we looked at and it was sent out, I mean, it was done in 2021, the pay plan. If we can go back by that, to that, we can go by the OREAD report that we already have in hand, and it sure would save us a lot of money if we went by that and presented the grant, I mean, did the grants.
That's right. I'm, I'm sorry. I'm, I'm hearing what Ms. McMichael is saying is that, 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 our last plan does not include the numbers from that, from that study from 2021.
That's right. We, we haven't updated one since then, where the Davenport, the same people who did that 2021 have kind of updated it. And we made that available, I think, last year where, where they came, where the gentleman from Davenport actually came and presented to us. When, when you guys approved the bigger renovations, that was part of it. So we had that updated. So we actually have an updated study from what you were saying, from 2021. The one thing that OREAD did not have in 2022 is we have almost 1,400 units that were, have been planned since 2020, 2022.
Right.
2022. I think I had an extra 20 in there.
And we also don't have the information in there about the redistricting.
Right, right. Because in-
But that will have to be done after we get, you can't, I mean, like I've told you before, I feel like we're getting the cart before the horse. I feel like we need to redistrict first. Then once the redistricting is done, then you know where all the kids lay out. You know what schools are going to have more than the other school. But if we're going to do that, after talking to a county commissioner this past week, he said that he felt like we could do the, both grants and at the same time, start the redistricting. So I don't see a problem with it. I mean, you know, we, we have talked about this since I've been on the board. And it goes nowhere. And I feel like we're spinning our wheels. We are leaving our main job behind. And that is what we do for students. We've got schools that are failing around this county. Instead of worrying about where we're going to do this, where we're going to build that, we need to get in these schools or somebody needs to get in these schools and hold these teachers and principals accountable for bringing these kids up. We are doing a great disservice to them by not giving them the highest quality of education we can give by the highest quality educations that, educators that we can find. And we don't have them in all schools. I, I hate to have to say that, but we don't. And, you know, we're doing a great disservice. So I think we need to take care of this and let's move on to some more pressing matters.
Madam Chair, I'm willing to amend my motion to include adding to the grant, adding to the South End grant, the additions to those schools that need it. Munroton and-
South, Munroton and Williamsburg.
But, Madam Chair, but we have not identified that those are the only two schools that we need to do additions to, or that those are the two schools that we need to do the additions to. Or am I missing something?
So what, what I presented, what I heard from the board was that we do a demographic study and redistricting at the same time. So we would know how to, Ms. McKinnney, kind of what you said, we're not putting the cart, we're doing both at the same time, right?
Right.
So we'll know. And then we can use that information to plan on where, because we're going to have to do some redistricting to adjust some. And to, we have some schools that are underutilized that we can, we can make sure that they are ready now in the future. And my goal is that any redistricting we do, because it's always a tough process when you're redistricting, that we, we try to do a really thoughtful job the first time that will last us, you know, five to 10 years at least. And so that's what we're getting the proposals from. They have to get the demographic information in order to suggest, hey, where lines are. Because what we're thinking about, especially for the southwest corner, is not only where, where students are now, because we have capacity technically right now in that corner, but with the number of units coming up, we're going to need capacity. And this is us trying to be a little bit more proactive so we don't have to kick the can down the road. So we'll have a really well-thought-out plan. And, and I think since the 2022 study, there have been a number of new housing units that have been announced.
And I think the public's tired of us talking.
Yes.
They want some action. I mean, they're just tired. I mean, I've heard that over and over again, that we talk and talk and talk, but we don't do anything.
Well, my motion intends to let people know what the board thinks.
Right. So we have a motion, we have a second.
Can I ask for one question?
Yeah.
Didn't we just make this motion a few weeks ago that we, that we move forward and send this to the commissioners?
I think that, I think it was questionable at that time. I don't think it was ever made a motion. And I'm not, that's one reason I would like to see it in form of something concrete.
Mr. McPherson?
Was there ever a second to the motion?
Not yet.
Not yet.
Okay.
Do we have a second?
Point of order.
Uh huh.
We need a second.
We need a second.
Keep talking.
Okay.
Discussion purpose, but you need to have a second.
Okay.
Yeah. We know they have.
Okay, do we have a second?
Yes, a second.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, can I ask a question?
Yes.
Mr. McPherson, do you have all of those notes? Is somebody, because I am clear as mud on that.
So, so what I was understood, that last one, is that I was going to, we were going to do two things, right? We were going to get you the proposals as quickly as we could and that we're going to propose some, some ways to make sure that the, there's, everybody's aware of the, the ad hoc committee. And so that's what I prepared for you today, the, the communication, some different options for the ad hoc committee. You can accept none of these, or all of these, or any of those. I was just presenting some ideas for the board to consider. So my understanding from the board was that we get this information and that way to present a stronger and more thoughtful grant to the county commissioners because this is something they were asking for, this type of information. And if we could get it, then we could feel better about what we do submit. We haven't been told when the grant deadline is. We're still working on the assumption it's going to be at the end of September. And so we know, again, I wish I had, had gotten that just a titch sooner so I could tell you when the other one, Cropper, would be able to start. But we know it would start in November, which would then be a little bit late, right? If the grant deadline stays as it is, at the end of September. And so that's why I was suggesting August because the board will have all the information and they can still make that same motion to go ahead and proceed. We're not going to have any advantage of doing it now as opposed to doing it in August. We still have plenty of time, especially if the board wants to move ahead with the South End grant. That has been done. We already had the architects and, and we would just ask them to maybe help us clean it up a little bit with more realistic cost. But that's it. And I think we even have some projected costs for some of the other things. So they've worked for us. So time is not the issue here for us to, to submit a grant. You could direct us to do that now, the 22nd, or the August meeting, and we still have plenty of time to get that to you for approval.
Madam Chair, I call for the question.
Okay, all right. Start with Mr. Wyatt.
Could, could we have the motion repeated? I would really like to have the motion repeated. Sorry, Mr. Wyatt.
Why would you read it again, Mr. Wyatt?
I'd like to make a motion to move forward with OREAD or another agency to get data for our schools, to also to apply for a grant to build a new South End at South Park. And we added-
The extensions to-
On the same, on the same grant, ask for money to add on wings to-
Williamsburg and Munroton.
Williamsburg and Munroton. Call for the question.
Okay. Mr. Wyatt, do you start the vote?
Yes.
No, I don't feel like we've done our due diligence.
Yes.
Yes.
No.
No.
I just want people to know that the longer we wait, the time's going to run out and South End will not be built.
Can I come in? I just feel like regardless of what we want to do, part of our due diligence is to submit an application that the county will be willing to put the 5% match to. And without the information collected, or at least being collected, at least without that contract, they're not going to agree to it. And so, Mr. Wyatt, if I misunderstood the order that you wanted it in-
Yeah. Well, I just think at this point in time, the commissioners would be willing to spend $2 million to build a $40 million school.
And may I make a comment? I don't think it's about building a new South End, because I think we all agree that we need a new South End.
But we're not doing anything.
But, but, Mr. Wyatt, what was stated was that we, that we were going to put into that application a, an addition onto Munroton and Williamsburg, which we may very well need. But we also need to look at the southwest corridor of our county. And we also need to look at Eden.
And Stoneville.
Yeah, absolutely. And so we need, we need to make that applica-, we need to get the biggest bang for our buck and put that application together in a way that is, that nobody can argue. It's tight as it can be and nobody can argue with it. And we get the funds to do it. And then when we need additional monies, we have the support of our county commissioners, we have the support of our board to move forward and do the additional things that need to be done. If it means adding on to Huntsville, adding on to Bethany, if it means building a new Stoneville, we have the data, we, it's solid and we've done our due diligence as a board, which is our job.
Madam Chair, and didn't we write a grant for Huntsville? I think it was before I came on.
That was turned down.
And it was turned down. Why was it turned down? Was it hastily written?
Mm-hmm.
So that's what we, we need to avoid that.
We don't need the haste. We need to have the time to do it.
And I'm not sending the-
As long as we move forward, I'm fine.
Yeah. Oh, I agree with you. And I, I'm good with waiting till July 22nd. I'm hoping when we have more information that we can make a decision, hopefully by July 22nd.
I can send out the proposals that we received, the two, because they were saying that we, from the same two vendors last year. I can send those out as early as tomorrow morning for the board, because I actually have them in hand.
I 100% agree with you that, in our discussion today, I told Dr. Stover, I feel like we're stuck in the mud. We're not making any progress. And it seems like every time, we, we talk these subjects to death and I'm ready to move on to with two, but I want all the information. Because I don't know, do we need, does Huntsville need to be added on to? Does Bethany need to be added on to?
Well, in his motion, he said he wanted OREAD. He wanted the data, you know?
But Dr. Stover just told us that OREAD is not available till November, so it-
So we missed the opportunity.
To have OREAD.
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
And I haven't, again, I spoke to all three of the folks personally and, and told them the situation. And it's just a matter of capacity, what OREAD can do. They're probably the most in demand. And so, again, I, I, I wish I could tell you what Mr. Cropper's timeline was, but he is the first person I called because I thought he would have the most flexibility. And we only are targeting people who have experience in the state of North Carolina too, by the way. We're not folks from outside who, who don't, because there are a lot of people who do demographic studies, but I would rather have someone with a proven record. And, and we've already done our due diligence for both OREAD. Well, we've worked with OREAD and we did our due diligence for Cropper last year. So I feel comfortable in recommending them for the quality of work.
I feel like we're all on the same page.
Mm-hmm. I do too.
Get it done.
They were ready to move.
Yes.
Madam Chair, can I say one more thing?
Yes.
I would encourage, I mean, since I'm suggesting that the, since I'm suggesting that the facility committee has sort of done its framework and gotten things going and we know when, when the money's going to free up, I'd just like to encourage all of y'all to reach out to them, to advocate for the schools, to, to be having conversations with each one of them. You know, just like the two of us can't speak for both boards, it's just important for all of us to be in good communication with them about the needs of our schools and what we're hearing.
And, and so what I'm getting from your comments earlier is that, and, and that is something the chair can do. It's part of the duties. They can form or disband committees. And so if, if that's what we direct, then everything else I wrote here is, you don't need to read it. We don't need to go over it. And I, I added on another possible proposal of kind of like having the liaison kind of spearhead things from the, to the county commissioners. But I think the more we can talk and have joint meetings, and I can certainly work with Mr. Metzler on trying to facilitate those, I think the better. Because, you know, communication, information sharing is key. And the process is work that we have to get the county commissioners blessings on when we spend these capital monies.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
I won't over my 10 minutes on that one.
Dr. Corcoran?
Let me see, I have to move this. I'm having a breeze. Come on. Here she goes. I'm having a breeze, okay. Oh, yeah. There we go. That did it. Wanting to increase that just a bit. Well, it's not wanting to, see if I can get, get it. Okay, that's going to do it as best as I think I can. So tonight, you know, as, as every June or July, I come before the board to talk with you about senior scholarship opportunities and just to let the public know how many opportunities our students have for scholarships as seniors. And also to make sure that the public knows that not necessarily are these all the scholarships that they accept, but scholarships that they are provided or offer. And so I do want to also tell the, the public and the board, we have many local scholarships. We have some state scholarships and then, of course, some larger foundational kinds of scholarships. So anyway, this is just an opportunity for everyone to see that. And so this is our annual scholarship information. So as you can see, this year, Dot McMichael High School had over $3 million. And this is the number of graduates. Morehead High School, about half a million dollars and 195 graduates. Rockingham County High School, 1,300,000 plus, 214 graduates. Reedsville High School, over $5 million in scholarships offered, 174 as graduates. Early College High School, 3 million plus and 73 scholarship, I mean, 73 graduates. And so over almost $14 million in scholarship funds this year alone. So moving on, this is our historical data. And every year it gets smaller and smaller because we have more historical data to be able to offer you. So at some point, my slides are going to look a little different for you guys moving forward. But this is historical data, so it allows us to go all the way back to 2006, 2007 to see how our students have been doing. And I'm going to share with you a little bit in the fact that, as you can see, we've had some really big years. For example, I'm going to pull mine up because that's small even for me to look at. But we've had some really big years. In 2011, 2010, we had, in 2009, 2010, 2011- had some really big years in 2011, 2010, we had in 2009, 2010, 2011, over $17 million in scholarships, 2012, 2013, again, 15 and 17. We have seen over the last, I would say, although $13 million is not shabby by any stretch of the imagination, but when we begin to talk about 17 million versus 13 million, it does look a bit different. So I did wanna say that our students, we have some very bright stars in Rockingham County schools, and they certainly make us proud. So, to date, over $279 million in scholarships offered when you take from 2007 to 2024. So, great opportunity to, to see that. I, I do wanna thank a few people. As you guys know, we do have college advisors who do work very closely with our students. They are, you know, pushing the FAFSA, pushing the college applications, making sure that the students are completing their essays, they're meeting with parents, and they're helping students decide what schools they may want to. And they're exploring schools for students, because oftentimes, our, our high school seniors still don't really know exactly where they want to attend, and based on their interest, of course. The Reedsville Area Foundation, the Rockingham County Educational Foundation, our high school teachers and administrators do a phenomenal job of supporting our seniors throughout the school year, our counselors, if it were not for our school counselors, in terms of helping them and guiding them along those four years of their high school career, other staff, support staff, we, we have lots of individuals who also support our students, and finally, our community organizations. We have a lot of community organizations who offer these scholarships to our students. So, I did wanna share just a couple of things with you. You'll see this trend line, and this is when the UNC College Advisors first began in Rockingham County, 2007, 2008, and you can see sort of where the scholarships have fallen along the way, and you see that in the last couple of years, they've taken a dip, but this year, for the last year, they kind of were on a, a trend to be back in the place that we wanted them to be. And I, I say that because I'm gonna share with you this as well. This is our FAFSA, and I wanted to explain why our FAFSA and why these scholarships may be having a little bit of difficulty being as high as 17 million. Let me just say that our students struggled, and our parents as well, with the new FAFSA application process. So, with that being said, what we are is we are part of the FAFSA pilot, and you'll see right now that we only had 45% of our total students actually complete and actually have one completed for a FAFSA application. Let me just tell you a little story about this. So, we, every year, we do the interviews for the Aubrey Lee Brooks Scholarship, and we normally do those in late March, early April. This year, we had to wait until June, because the, even at the U.S. Education, Department of Education level, they could not verify who had completed the FAFSA and who had not. So we were having difficulty just getting our students through to the process. So I just wanna say that if that looks a little low to our parents or to our community, I think, again, 13 million, almost 14 million is not shabby, but when we can't complete the FAFSA because it's so difficult, we're having a difficult time. We did have trainings, I promise, we didn't leave them out to, to dry. We, we did have scholarship application trainings, FAFSA nights at schools, we will continue to have FAFSA nights, and we had Tequila Hall from CFNC who came and also trained our school counselor. So, again, it's just a, it's just been a change and a much more difficult thing, but I did wanna share all of that with you to say, we are extremely grateful for the scholarship opportunities that are provided to our seniors, and very excited for their bright futures. Any questions?
What about military appointments? Did we have any this year?
We did have some. I heard them, I, I can't say that I, that was added, it may have been added in that, but I, I heard at Dot McMichael High School, there was a student there, that I heard that either the Naval Academy, I believe, and, or, and then I think at Morehead High School, if Mr. Stover was, they had one as well.
Morehead had one.
And, and Mr. Vernon, was there any from Rock High that you know of?
Yeah, Air Force, but I mean, that wasn't included.
Okay.
And, and he actually didn't take, I, I know, because I know his dad, he, he didn't take it, he actually went to state for Air Force JROTC.
Well, we did have quite a, I mean, I was impressed that we had as many as we had, and, because there have been years when I've not heard that announced at all, so it was, it was good to hear that this year. Anything else? All right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
And I will try to, now I'm gonna try to figure out how to get this back to the agenda, and.
Thank you so much.
Try to get this back to Mr. White, and then, Mr. White, let me help you with it. Let's make sure that this is not.
Mr. White is here to give us a report on the mobile dental lab.
Look up here in the corner here.
While he's coming, I know, I don't know that he's gonna speak to this, but there's a mobile health unit as well, I don't know if I'm saying that right. If anybody has the opportunity to tour that, it's very exciting, it's fairly new, but it's very nice.
And, anyway, I just thought I'd say that while it was coming up.
And the last time you, you were here, we were in the middle of COVID, right?
It was since then, August 20th, I remember that day.
I bet.
I saw quite a few cars parked on, I was about to turn around.
Thank you so much. All right, thank you all for having me today. I'm very happy to be here to discuss what has happened in the past year of us being here in Rockham, Rockham County Schools with our mobile dental unit. So, yes, August 20th, I remember that day very well, but I've been here one time since. So you'll see some things that were, a little bit of regurgitation of information from our November 14th, 2022, when we were originally looking at the expiration of expanding our dental clinic, so we do have the one in our brick and mortar in-house, as I like to call it, it will be celebrating 25 years of service to the county this spring, so we're looking forward to that. But you'll see some things that are old in that sense with the information, but also new with some of the data that we have. So just historically, we could not do what we've done without the support of the Duke Endowment. The Duke Endowment had a oral health initiative to seek support to maybe promote prevention and expand school-based oral health services, and they had found through research that due to poor access to care, low-income minority, enrolled children suffer disproportionately in the sense of oral health. Also, something very interesting, I think I've said it three or four times, dental disease, dental carries is five to eight times more prevalent than childhood asthma is the number one reason why kids are not in school, is about dental disease and having to go to the dentist for these things. So school-based oral health prevention programs have been shown to be effective to mitigate some of this dental decay and dental disease, but while effective, you don't see them expanded or replicated a lot in the United States or in North Carolina. The challenges to sustaining this and starting this up are very costly, and it's hard to recruit in the private sector to the public sector for some of these positions as well. So with that, the Duke Endowment funded eight programs many years ago to see what are they doing, what kind of models they're, they're doing throughout the state or in North Carolina, South Carolina, and then look at funding opportunities to expand on these. So in 2018, the Duke Endowment with Blue Cross and Blue Shield of the Carolinas launched the school-based oral health expansion initiative, and they also used Maher, or excuse me, the Medical University of South Carolina, and the Great East Carolina School of Dental Medicine for technical assistance on these grants as they were awarded. Before we do that, you'll see pictures, but we were of the fourth cohort to receive funding, we received a pilot grant to see if this is something that is feasible for Rockingham County Division of Public Health and Rockingham County Schools, then a $300,000 implementation grant with that. Um, so you'll see here, in November 22, I came to you with a, a black dental trailer that I wanted to go look at and purchase. I'll, I'll tell you a little story about that, it was in Atlanta, it was a concierge dental service that somebody had done during COVID, and before that, I had never been on a plane ride, so I took my summer to go to Atlanta, which was, I recommend if you've never flown, it's a good trip, it's 45 minutes, very easy, to look at the dental unit and say, this is what we want to purchase, and this is the, the modality that we want to go to. So you can see there, it's called the Smart Mouth, we had a naming contest with staff and everyone to say, what do we want it to represent? And you can see our classroom and our progress report on the other side, signed by me for a good progress of, or certificate of achievement for good oral health. And you can see a few pictures there, we had our floss cutting, if you will, in October, and you can see most of our dental staff to the, or most of our department staff on the far left, and then more, our, most importantly, our school nurses, your school nurses on the right there with our tooth mascot, Dr. Gleam, as I've been told he's called. So staffing, this past year, we had a part-time dentist, so about 16 hours. We have a dental program coordinator, a dental hygienist, but for this new fiscal year, we are reclassifying to a full-time employment for the dentist and adding another dental assistant due to the demand and realizing that the more people, or the more staff that we have in that, we can see more children. And you can see our staff there, Dr. Garbra, Holly Bridgett, and myself, I think that was in the summer when we started at Dillard. So, why, or what do we need to be at school? Unfortunately, the mobile unit that you saw, it's not self-sustained, it cannot run on generator power, it actually had a generator that wasn't large enough, and on top of that, to heat and cool a aluminum trailer typically on asphalt in the summer, we had to put another air conditioning unit on it on top of the suction machine, the air compressors, all these things. We would need a 50-amp hookup, so very similar to what you see hooking up a dryer in your home, we need that hookup on the exterior of a, a school, access to a freshwater site, so essentially a water hose, and access to gray water disposal, so anything that we, saliva, blood, and all those, we have to dump typically in a, access to a janitor closet on the outside of a building. And these facilities are usually more readily available at or near the school cafeteria, I've learned, typically because if you think about the electrical box and everything, that might be where you have higher circuitry for some of those ovens and things of that matter. And to space to park our mobile dental unit, since it is a trailer, we can hop curbs, mount curbs, and go on and off-road. Typically, it's around paved areas, but it can go in a gravel or grass as well. Patient flow, so we've looked at this, and it's changed a little bit since I saw you November 22. Two to three weeks prior to arrival to the school site, our program coordinator provides the consent forms to our, the school nurse at that site, and typically, we ask for the exact number of students in each grade, so we know that there's that many, there's always access to bring more copies as needed, and forms are distributed, distributed to classrooms for students and parent guardian approval. We then pick these consents back up, and the coordinator reviews them for medical history, eligibility, maybe medication, allergies, et cetera, and then we will determine that child's schedule to when we can see them on the unit. One of the most important things about a mobile dental unit is, one, we bring the service to the child, but we also want to avoid a lot of time out of curriculum. First one or two weeks that we're actually physically on the site, the staff will pull these children out of the classes and evaluate their needs. So we've had their consent, we need to see what type of dental decay, any of these things, do they need cleaning, sealants, fluoride or restoration, so fillings, if you will, and then sc-, schedule follow-up treatments based on that child's needs. We have a very unique model from other dental programs in the state that we run a dental hygienist instead of just a dentist and dental assistant, and that is because in North Carolina, the Dental Society has ruled that a public health hygienist can work and place sealants and do some of these things in absence of a dentist so long as that child's had an examination in that past year. So that hygiene rule was created by the Dental Society for public health departments alone. Also, just for any questions, local anesthetics are, are used only. We cannot, and I would not recommend using any type of nitrous on a trailer that has things, I mean, it can explode, implode, and also, when using anesthetics, children are sent back with a numb sticker to alert their staff, and also, we tell the school nurse, and a cotton roll to keep them from biting their tongue or lip. For any major restorations, we will refer out, we do have our mobile, or excuse me, our in-house clinic that we can refer to, or to a specialist as needed to be taken care of. Additional information, we really wanted this to mirror our school schedule, or the school's calendar, so typically, it's Monday through Friday, Monday through Thursday, 8 to 4. We do have that flexibility, most dental offices are off on Friday, so if they needed to, if there's a school workday, there's no children there, that they can't flex that and maybe be off that Monday, so we can maximize seeing students in our mobile unit. Program sustainability, I'm very proud of, it's not tied to grant funds or local funds, we do this through the way we be reimbursed and bill Medicaid, and that's, that's very important to us, that we have created, our dental unit, our in-house has been there 25 years, it's running on a sustained model. And initially, based on technical assistance from the Duke Endowment, we'd looked at Title I schools, we looked at a threshold of certified, free, reduced launch of 50% to where we would target, and you can see the list there, but with all of the title, of all of Rockham County Schools being considered Title I, we want to place hookups at all schools eventually. It does take some time to do that. Some more information, we had our soft start date on September 11th, so we went to Dillard before even the, the unit was wrapped, we wanted to go to the schools and say, what can go wrong? Are we gonna trip a breaker, or is something gonna break on our machine that we just took from Atlanta to here? How's the staff gonna work? Do we need to change our flow? Different materials, all those good things. And then we had our official start date that you saw with our tooth mascot on October 30th. And in this year, we'd went to four schools, so Dillard Academy, Mall Street, Leaksville Spray, and South End prior to the school year closing, and we saw about 174 kids, and you'll see here in a minute some of the statistics that ran with that. The number of treatment services provided were 985, so even though there's 174 patients, more than one treatment service can be provided on a child. So if there's multiple surfaces on one tooth, or more than one tooth that maybe has some decay. Prevention services, 682, so that would be maybe a sealant per tooth, fluoride varnishing, et cetera. And total number of exams were 171, children receiving sealants were 89, number receiving cleanings were 169, number of children receiving some type of restoration service, so of the 174, 128 had some type of filling or restoration service, and the children with extractions were 25. But based on the chart you'll see in a minute, pulling different dental procedure codes, we were able to look at and say that of the children, we saw 78% presented some type of untreated tooth decay on that first visit. So that right there says the knee for what we're doing here with our, with you all and our mobile dental unit. So now it's time for some pictures of this. I did wanna put disclaimer, we do have on our consent, a consent form for sharing the images, but some of these, if you're not used to seeing images of tooth decay, can be a little bit disturbing, so close your eyes, please. The first one, typically, I try to do them as one child or two, the top one you can see there, that was our X-ray images. I didn't wanna be a health director, I wanted to be a dentist, so it's very interesting, you can see of a tooth, some of the light spots, that's typically where you see your tooth decay, and also, the child on the second, were the same child, but where we had to do an extremely deep clean, if you will. So I was told from our staff that, even staff said, that child's smile looks different, it looks like a different child when they walk down the halls, because you can see the, the difference in the tooth, the calculus there. So let me move my microphone here, you'll probably hear me a little bit better, too. There's two different children there, the one on the left and right, so you can see the X-ray images up top of where the decay was and what it actually looks like in person, and the same as well on the right. When we first started to, as you see this image, we were told in one of our schools, the first two or three kids were probably some of the worst that our dental staff has seen, and I remember that I was told that one child said they had not brushed their teeth since maybe three years ago, so. So if they were eight or nine, that was pre-COVID. And it was very startling. I remember our program coordinator saying to me, these images that we see, I saw these in school, and I thought these are worst-case scenario, and no, these happen in real life. So my favorite chart is something we do for performance measures and with the Duke Endowment funding, is we were able to come up with a spreadsheet of dental procedure codes. I just call them D-codes in short for billing. And you can see, based on this, we're able to run statistics of number of services provided, number of treatment, number of comprehensive exams, number of children receiving sealants, different procedures, and the number of treatment plans completed. So you can see those on the bottom, and that's where I pulled a lot of that data that you saw, that 97%, you can see here, of the children that came on board received some type of annual exam. So 171 of 174, why is that? They may have had such an extreme case, we had to refer them on visit or also lost to follow-up. That's one great thing about the mobile dental unit. No-show rates are almost nonexistent because we bring the product to, to the schools. That's easier where some, you know, you don't have to worry about a car breaking down, and we just have to make sure the kid is in school to see them. So you can see all those numbers there, and I really cannot thank the dental staff enough for pulling this together for me, because I asked for this probably more than necessary. And also, something that we do for quality improvement is, when we go to a school, we always like to do a survey of what our principal administrative staff thought while we were there. And these might be a little bit small. Yes, it is on a five-point Likert scale, but everyone has had very nice things to say there in Dillard that we are very thankful for our participation and the ability to serve so many of our students. Mall Street, it was amazing to have the mobile unit here at Mall Street Elementary. They became part of the Shark family, which is really great to hear. And also at South End, thank you for being flexible, courteous, and friendly. We really need the support of our, our school administration of whatever site, because without them, essentially, we're a stranger coming into the school to take children into our mobile unit part right outside of the school. And it takes a lot of partnership and trust for all that to happen. And that brings me, again, to the importance and the partnerships. The work to provide the best care is not possible without all these people. I want to first thank Amanda Perkins and all the school nursing staff. They have been instrumental in making this happen, presenting. I think I presented in March of 23 to the School Health Advisory Council of what we need to do and what could work better. Little things that we needed to, to partner with. For example, if a child had to have an extraction, make sure that they had the medication consent form to go home, so if that child needed Tylenol or Ibuprofen, that that consent had already, had started. You all and Dr. Stover, thank you for supporting this. Again, in November of 22, I came to you with an idea. And it, so far, it's been great, and, and you know, it worked, and we would love to continue on. James Rohr, I think he's here. He is the man that has made a lot of this happen. Without him, we would not have the physical hookups. Thank, thank you for supporting us for the hookups, water lines, parking. He would even bring me or send me an email map with blue and yellow on where we would have each hookup at each school that we've looked at thus far. Couldn't do it without him. Our, our principals that we work with, Starr, Kelly, Brooke, and Tamika, and Tia, thank you all for supporting us at your school location. And also the parents, our parents to provide the consent, to ask questions and call if anything, we cannot do this. Our success in this program has been dependent and always dependent on everyone here, and we really appreciate it. It's, it's, in my mind, my mentor says, it's one of the right things to do to make sure we can provide these services. And like I did in November, I leave my Dr. Seuss quote, that you shore a handy when you smile, so keep your teeth around a while. Any questions?
We appreciate all you're doing for our children in this county, and dental health is so important.
I have one question, Madam Chair. And you may have addressed it, and I just missed it. Did, did you get like 100% participation from parents, or how did that?
When the consent goes, there is a screening process. We give as many as the, the school says for staff. So if they have a dental home already, we cannot see them, so we have to screen those out. That's something we can keep up with in the future. If, say, a dealer asks for 200 consent forms and we provide them, that's something we can do. There might be some loss of them from going from us to, to nurse, to nurse, to teacher, from teacher to child, and child in reverse. There's a lot of hands that something could happen. But we can keep that number in the future.
Well, I mean, you know, just seeing those pictures of those little teeth that were not happy teeth. I can't imagine how a child sits in a classroom trying to stay focused with issues like that. So, I mean, you guys are doing a great service to our students, so.
We're very excited and very happy to do it. And to be able to add a dental assistant and make our dentists full-time, it's been, it's been exciting to do.
Thank you. We appreciate it so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What about your mobile medical unit?
Yes, we received through COVID funds, our mobile medical unit, we call it the Wow Mobile, so Wellness on Wheels, because we have to have a naming contest for everything we do. And we had the Band-Aid cutting, what, last month, I believe? Noticing themes. So we had floss in the Band-Aid. Right now, we're, we just passed our, our telehealth policies. So we're looking at multiple avenues to use it. One example, where we have patients that are assigned to us through Medicaid expansion and transformation, they may be utilizing the emergency department for services. We are able to go and provide primary care on-site if they allow it, and we could tell it into one of our providers at the home base at the health department. Other things, we can provide screening events. We know school immunizations is going to be a big one, too. We've already started working with Amanda, because we all know in September, something goes out, and all of a sudden, immunization clinics are booked because children may not have had the required vaccines. So we're hoping, not only with open houses that we have this at maybe one or two schools, but also closer that we can identify which school may have the higher of the need for the immunization clinic, so we can actually have it in the parking lot and let everyone know that we have it there. Because our mobile, our medical unit is self-contained. It does have a generator on it. It has a bathroom for our laboratory, it has an examination table. It, it's more, it can move around a lot easier. We also want to see it used for the Head Start, medical screenings, and dental screenings as well. Those are things that would be, in my opinion, easier, easy to do and very needed to make sure our ki- our kids can be enrolled in the programs. There is discussion of how can we use it more for primary care and in the school health setting in conjunction with the school nurses to maybe kind of work as a zonal of if we know there's not a nurse in a certain region to be on standby, if you will, if there needs to be some type of acute care. We're just not quite there yet. And again, Amanda Perkins, the school nurse, I've been great to work with and very forthcoming on some ways we could maybe utilize this.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Now we'll move to committee reports. We don't have a safety. Ms. McMichael?
Is my microphone on? So this is the policy committee report. The goal of the policy committee strives to interpret both current and recommended revisions by the State Board of Education in order to ensure the policies set forth by the Rockingham County Board of Education Policy Manual, and they're aligned accordingly. The summary of our actions is the Board Policy Committee met June 10th, 2024, to review recommended revisions for the following policies. Policy 1310 and 4002 parental involvement. Policy 1760 4030 7280 prohibition against retaliation. Policy 4320 student promotion and accountability. Policy 4270 6145 concussion and head injury. Policy 6125 administering medication to students. Policy 7130 licensure. Policy 5023 6128 and 7268 emergency administration of naloxone. And Policy 4140 foreign exchange students. During the committee meeting, Mr. McPherson, legal counsel to the board, discussed the instances in which Policy 1310 and 40, 4002 parents could meet to opt-in versus the usual opt-out method. Mr. Richardson, the Director of Human Resources, confirmed that in Policy 7130, the state changed the definition of student. They are now considered a student for six months after graduation. Mr. Gladio, the Public Information Officer and Safety Director, confirmed that for the purposes of Policy 5023, 6128, and 7268, that the committee should know that there is no side effect, no matter the age of the student. He shared the importance of having naloxone or Narcan on hand to administer in the matter of seconds and not have to track down the SRO officers. The lead nurse, Amanda Perkins, and Mr. Gladio agreed that it would be placed in a hard case with all life-saving instruments, such as the AED and EpiPens. Mr. Gladio shared with Mr. Justin Stewart, the Training Officer from the Rockingham County Emergential Medical Services, is willing to provide the training at the Safety Summit on August the 5th, 2024. Discussion also centered around Policy 4140. It was brought to the committee's attention that staff members were asked about foreign exchange students participating in graduation. Dr. Corcoran noted that within the policy, in the next to last sentence, it specifies that students who were enrolled as 12th graders may participate in high school graduation exercises and associated ceremonies and be awarded honorary certificates. Students who are not identified as seniors would not be eligible to participate. Dr. Corcoran noted that high school principals may also, may be made aware of this new policy for the 24, 25 school year. All of the policies, but for the exception of Policy 5023, 6128, 7268, emergency administration of naloxone, will be presented to the board for approval during this Board of Education meeting, and that the Policy 5023, 6128, 7268 will be submitted for first reading approval.
Thank you, Mrs. McMichael. Do we have any others?
Well, the Finance Committee met today, so we don't have a report on that.
Okay, all right. In safety, we have a met, so we're okay. All right. Do we have a motion to go in closed session? Mr. Butler, would you read the statement?
I ain't got it memorized. I don't know if I have it. Madam Chair, I make a motion that the board move into closed session to discuss confidential personal information pursuant to General Statute 143-318.11A, 1 and 6, and to consult with our attorney to protect the current attorney-client privilege pursuant to General Statute 143-318.11A3.
Thank you, Mr. Butler. Do we have a motion?
I'll second.
Second?
Can I release it?
You make the motion.
I make the motion.
All in favor? Please cut off our microphones, we'll take a 10-minute break.